I thought you were going to say I'm kidding.
Have to bring us on this side of the table. I need to do two bad ones.
It's been over there.
Ready, Paul?
You're going.
Ready.
I would like to welcome you to the board meeting. This is the Board of Trustees of the Town of Bena Vista, Colorado. It's July eleventh, 2023. The time is seven oh seven. And I'd like to ask you to silence your cell phones if you have them. It's you. Follow what you call the role, please.
Bear Faith.
Here.
Trustee Cobb.
He's on Zoom.
Trustee Hildinga.
Here.
Trustee LaCretzi.
Here.
Trustee Rice.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
And Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance is to the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, my nation and to God, indivisible.
Board members, you have in front of you the agenda. And if there are any changes to the agenda, I would entertain them now. Hearing none as there are motion to approve the agenda as written, so moved. LaCretzi and Swisher, all in favor? Anyone oppose? Then we also have the consent agenda. Are there any changes or additions to that? Or anything you'd like to pull out of the consent agenda to discuss as a business item? This includes the airport services contract for the apron repaving and fence relocation. Big contract. Good work, Jack.
What's the storage tank re-toning going to look like? Exactly how it looks now or?
No. We're going to match the color of the tank that we installed back in 2018. So they'll be the same shade of brown. So the same, the colors will match there. We don't have anything else identified in scope. So they, there's a, there's some rehab work that we need to do to the cap. But it's, yeah, it's basically a re-toning project to match the color of the tank. Yeah, and so we are under budget with this. So if you approve it, we could maybe go from there.
I'm hoping that we might be able to set a town decal up there with our slogan.
Just the face of. If it would be cool.
The beautification committee didn't want to take it on and neither apparently did Chaffey Arts. So maybe just a really nice decal. Okay, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. First second.
One second.
LaCretzi and Rowe, all in favor?
Hi.
Is anyone? The motion passes. And now we've reached the point in the meeting where we would like to hear from any of you who have signed in on the flip door to give us your opinion. So we have two people who've signed in. And these both relate to a business item that's later on the agenda, but it is not a public hearing. So I'd like to hear from these people now. The first person is Megan Blake. And I'd like for you to give your name and address for the record. And then you have three minutes in which to speak to us. Thank you for coming.
My name's Megan Blake. Address is 109 Merrill Lane. And here just to urge you guys to make childcare in BB in particular, a high priority on the list. It is a desperate need. Both my husband and I own two different small businesses, local small businesses in town. And not only does it affect us, but it affects our businesses and our employees. We've lost employees because we, they have childcare issues. I have a two and a half year old and it took almost two years of wait lists to be able to get any sort of reliable childcare. Obviously expecting my second and with this one, it's, it's sad. Like I found out I was pregnant and the second phone call I made was to put the kid on wait lists before anything else. You know, as you guys know, we only have three at home licensed childcare providers in BB. Each will take two infants. None of our Busy Bees, the Montessori, or the Grove will take infants. So basically you're out of luck until your kid's three, unless you get into the Grove's toddler program, which gives priority to school teachers or anyone in school. So that's a good luck there. So really I want to try to have the town make a priority for zero to three year olds care. And, you know, I came to all the planning meetings for the Carbonade Street project and really would like to see some initiative moving forward on the, my Town of BB website. The last update on there was from July 27th of 2022. And we'd like to just, you know, for all the laymans in the town of being able to see kind of what the updates are on that to reach the public a little bit more easily and to kind of light a fire to get town working on childcare. The amount of people who've moved to town in the last few years with kids, like we need help. I know 10 pregnant women right now and all those six spots for infants are taken. So please help. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Megan. And we have Danielle Ryan. Here as well, please give your name and your address for the record.
My name is Danielle Ryan. I live at 158 Raymond Lee Drive in BB. As this community and valley continue to struggle to find attainable housing options as a priority for the county's workforce, it's also imperative that we continue to work towards finding attainable childcare options. Like Megan said, particularly for the zero to three year old range. You can't solve the workforce issue without addressing the lack of childcare along with housing scarcity. They go hand in hand. As both a mother and an employer in this community, I've experienced the struggle in finding childcare firsthand for my own child, but also through my employees and friends. You know, I got lucky and found a unicorn in this town with an unofficial at home childcare provider, but her housing is not secure and that might be changing in a few months. Everyone I know with kids under three have their own stories about how they've basically had to beg, borrow, and steal to find any childcare that they can, or they go completely without it. And they've had to make the choice to sacrifice some other part of their life, whether that's with work related or some other part of their lives, to make those childcare ends meet. And the resulting stress that it takes is a major toll on many ways, on children and the parents and coworkers and employers and other businesses around town. As a, as an integral foundation for our community, the town has a responsible, a responsibility to continue to support organizations, facilities, and efforts that expand the early childhood education projects within the community. And doing so allows a dedicated family workforce to not only survive in this town, but thrive and that, and grow. And that supplies a much needed taxpaying essential workforce that makes this town not just pass through, but a thriving vibrant community that supports its locals and visitors alike. You can't continue to have tourism if you don't have workforce here that supports all those businesses. In closing, I encourage the town to continue to actively support projects like the Carbonade Street Childcare Facility and other early childhood education projects that might come down the pipeline.
Good, Danielle. Our lack of response should not be taken as a lack of interest. We'll talk about it at trustee staff, staff interaction at the end of the meeting. And then we also have a, a childcare issue on our agenda coming up. Thank you both. Now we have staff reports, starting with Chief Morgan.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'll get right into it. The Tyler Record Management System, that was one of our big asks in last year budget. We're up and running on that. We had a nice retired police officer from Athens, Georgia come out and do a training with us the first week of June. Really grateful to the, the board and the taxpayers for providing money so we could get a updated system. We had a lot of technology needs that were really outdated. And this has really helped us. There's obviously some wrinkles to iron out with any new software, but the officers are really happy with it. There's a lot of time-saving features, especially as it comes to traffic accidents. It has a software where we can do our crash scene diagrams and things like that. So thank you for that. We're really excited about it. If anyone's ever interested in seeing some of the features, maybe swing by the new PD once we're up and running over here and we'll show it to you. As far as the new PD, yeah, we're still plugging along. We don't have the CO yet. I think the HVAC's going in this week and officers are just starting to move some items and things into their offices. The old PD, the air conditioning broke, so it's, it's getting hot over there. So we're just kind of having a, a hot summer. I'm ready to get into the new building for sure. You can see some of the photos I posted there. We did our annual inspection on June 21st. And this also kind of speaks to the equipment that the taxpayers purchase and that the, the board approves for the police department. At least once a year, we do a pretty serious inspection where we have officers clean all their cars, equipment, getting our Class A uniforms and, you know, make sure that everything's working properly, that people are taking care of their equipment and everything and, and come together and have dinner and kind of go over some housekeeping things. A quick brief on the Fourth of July. Really, really long hours worked by a lot of the officers. And I know other town employees, Public Works and the Rec Department especially, Leslie, Quilico, everywhere we looked all day long, we saw her running around. So big shout out to all the town employees and our officers for working long hours and such an awesome holiday, not just because it's my birthday, but you know, I guess America's birthday too. We are so proud to be a part of that and, and help the events take place, but it is a lot of work. One of the photos I put there, we, we did put on Facebook that we cautioned people that they didn't want people throwing candy. And some people thought that was kind of a killjoy. Candy was allowed to be handed out and the intent there is just safety. As kids, sometimes we'll run out into the street if it doesn't make it to the curb and if there's big trucks coming. And you can see my body camera footage there, that first picture, there's some of those big rigs, the fire trucks and tow trucks had to get pretty close to the crowd to make that turn. And it's just not good to have kids running out toward that. And Leslie and the planners had some streamers running along the sidewalks there to help with that. So that was great. You can see some of the types of calls for service we've been having. Traffic accidents are up a little bit. That's no surprise considering the amount of traffic we're seeing in town. You'll see I have a notation there. I'll be really quick on this. Street naming for fallen officers. I've talked to Philip about this and Joseph and Joel. The Bena Vista Police Department has two officers who've been killed in the line of duty. One of them was Tom Perkins, who was shot and killed in the 1880s. I believe it was over near Tabor Street. And his name is on the National Memorial in DC. And then a lot of people still living here remember Officer Trevor Stizak, who was killed in 1996 by a drunk driver. I've been in pretty close communication with Trevor's sister and his dad. And, you know, growing up in Colorado Springs, I remember as a kid when a police officer, Mark Dabbling, was killed and they named a street after him. So I thought that'd be a great thing to do someday. And I just wanted to put it out there for the board, maybe, you know, get some advocacy for that. As we have growth in town, there's a couple of streets that need to name. I think Perkins Place, Trevor's Trail, something like that would be really awesome. And especially the Trevor's family, I think that'd be meaningful. Just last two things I wanted to mention real briefly. Got a meeting yesterday with Full Circle Restorative Justice. Mr. Eric Lee's running that program. We met down in Salida with the Sheriff's Office, the DA. It's a pretty good program, so we're working with them. And then Colorado Post has mandated a new training for all officers. I took it this morning. It was online for murdered and missing indigenous persons. Is actually, wasn't sure what to expect, but it was a really, really good training and it gave us a lot of insights onto trafficking and things like that. So some of the things that we've got going on. Again, thank you for your time. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for getting us through our safe Fourth, Fourth of July weekend, extended weekend.
Happy belated birthday.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there questions for the chief? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And now we have Jack Wyhouse, Airport Manager.
You're the Mayor, Trustees. So my report can be found on page 96. Not, not a long report. All our staff are back from various different rotations, short breaks. I myself will be out a couple of times, once tomorrow and then a little later on in the month. So as far as the grants, it's going to come up later in our resolution. Just to segue to that, CDOT, both CDOT FA have authorized the funding for the project, the construction phase, which will start this summer. They authorized all the funding. What will, resolutions tonight will be requesting to bring pavement maintenance service under contract under the town as well as DIBO to manage that project. The money is all there. Operation wise, we're probably pretty much similar to this time last year. And even in 2021, we're down a bit, but fuel sales, for example, are up from this time last year is overall for the year. But we're lagging a bit, just behind, but trending very similar. We had a Honda jet go off our runway way back in March. They're finally fixing it. They're telling us they're going to try and fly that out of here this week. So that'll be finally out of our hangar. And then we had another jet break down last week. They fixed that and that flew out on the weekend. I don't know if we're starting to get a reputation or not, but good thing is it's a great place to break down. That's what we hear. Everybody loves it. So it will encourage it.
That's not the new revenue source.
No, it is not. Last year we had a Goosa helicopter in and they finally come and took, came and took their storage container that left just Friday. So we're starting to get all, everything cleaned up. Just, which is not in here, but breaking. CDOT is going to have their equipment sale at the end of August. So we'll go up and look at that. We're going to try and look for a new snowplow for the runway. So that's what's going on there. 19, 20 July is going to be very busy at the airport. We have the Firestone Endurance running. They're going to pre-stage at the airport all the equipment. So that'll happen on the weekend as well as the automobile rally is coming through the airport on the 20th. So there'll be something like 70, 80 cars there. So we'll have them all parked out. If anybody around the board will come up and have a look at some of these cool cars. They're just doing a pit stop, having a bit of lunch and then carrying on to the next leg of their journey. So they're going to stage at the airport on the 20th. First projects, we, I think we've done all the wiring for, we're going to put in new cameras and more cameras at the airport just to enhance our security. So all the wiring has been completed. We're just waiting on the cameras and what type of camera and the price on that. And I think we're coordinating, it's going to be more than just an airport when it comes to cameras. Coordinate with town, do it in one false loop. But that's where we're at with that. That's, that's about it for the, the actual airport report if there's any question.
Anyone have questions? For Mr. Miles? Thank you, Jack. Good luck with your. Okay, and now Robert, Red Zone Fire Chief for Chaffey County Fire.
Right. Good evening, everybody. So as far as us per personnel, one of the things we're excited about, we've just got to classify more volunteers candidates come in. So we started that academy. There's four of them that are going to be on the north end of the county. So that's exciting to be able to get them up and going. We have one that came from South Carolina and has lots of certifications, lots of experience. We, you know, up to speed. So it'd be nice to add some more depth of, of knowledge to that, to the group. Our training captain started two weeks ago. We, so we hired somebody last month, but it's exciting to get him on board and start moving forward. Got lots of great ideas for future trainings and so looking, very forward to that. Fire Marshal's office, they've been definitely very busy. The town, BB's keeping them busy. So the plan reviews, the development, all of that. That's all moving on really good. We're still continuing to work on strategic goals. One of the ones is financial needs and a couple of us will talk more when we get to that point. Still waiting on results of our ISO assessment. Hopefully we'll get that in the next month or two. Excited to see what that is, see if we've improved or where we've improved. So. And I think I didn't put on there, I mean, Chief Morgan brought the Fourth of July. It's definitely busy for everybody. We had four members of our department get together. Basically helped the American Legion set up the fireworks and tear them down. This year they had myself and Chris Roemer, our maintenance firefighter. We wired up the fireworks this year, so that was kind of a whole new experience, wiring them all and setting them off. There was one part that I think you got a little bit too excited. So if you watch fireworks and there was a point where they start shooting off pretty quick, that was having me get a little excited. They made them slow down, but it was a fun experience and we're working on getting our fireworks techniques license to be able to do that. A lot of American Legion members are, are getting older and it's harder for them to do it. So we're going to start stepping in a little bit more and helping them with that. Also Fourth of July, the parade. Lots of people out on Main Street. Part of our, we participate in, we have three parades throughout the county. All started within an hour of each other. So we had trucks going all over the place. We had, Pacha Springs had a parade in Alpine. Alpine started doing it during COVID when nobody else was and we can, Alpine, which is a probable parade to do. So. So one exciting thing for us is our Station Four, Pacha Springs. It's more than a year and a half overdue. We're finally able to occupy the buildings. We're at a point that we can say it's complete. We, we have some disputes going on. But what that's done for us is now we've started having staff down there. Our resident program has moved down there. And so they're, they're in the station, it's great integrating with there as well as what we have staff down there during the day. So that improves response across the county. So anytime you guys are traveling to a slight area and have misfortune, something happens, we'll have, we'll have quicker response down there as well. So that's, that's definitely exciting. We've been waiting for this for a long time. We've actually been planning this, started talking about this station over six years ago. So yeah, it's definitely excited to be at that point with this. And then, you know, July, besides the fact it was busy, start of, you know, the month, but Fourth of July, all of that. It's also a difficult time for our firefighters. A year ago, we lost our Battalion Chief Billy Cordova in a motorcycle accident. So he's, we actually found out during the car show last year. And we planned a big dinner and everything for this week for us all firefighters to get together. But also prior to that, we found out Ron Hassel, who's been a longtime member, he's at 47 years on the fire department. One of the founding members passed away from a long battle with cancer. So we had all that kind of in the same week. We did have the service for Ron Hassel this past Saturday. It was definitely a packed church and, you know, we're been working with the family and all their needs and all that. So, you know, it's kind of a tough thing for us, but you know, the best thing that we can do is keep moving forward and take the stuff that they left, left for us. So. Besides that, call volume wise, we're actually down this year from the previous year, which definitely is a good thing. So. All I've got for you, anybody have any questions?
Questions for the chief?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Sue. Go ahead.
Yeah, no questions, chief. But I did want to just say how sorry I am that you lost Captain Hassel. And also just right on the heels of losing Billy Cordova. And also just congratulate you on getting to the point where, that you have on Station Four. I know it's been a long time coming.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Thank you, chief.
All right, thanks. As I'm getting.
Okay, now we have business items. The first of them is St. Rose Chapel lease renewal by Shining Mountains Montessori School. And we have Lisa Lamb here, the school director. Would you like to come to the podium? Great, okay.
Hi, everyone. Good to see everyone. July. Thank you for your time, Mayor and Board of Trustees. So much to say about this last year as far as your gifting us the time and space and the beautiful, not just location, but heritage filled building of the St. Rosa Room Chapel to provide licensed childcare for preschoolers and kindergarteners this past year, summer. We also have a few older students as well. So that's exciting for us to experience being a camp counselor. We are requesting a renewal of our lease for one year to start. As you can tell from the board packet document that I shared, we've had quite a few successes, including success of radon mitigation that the town has generously paid for and which was very important for us as serving not just small children, their families, but also our work, our staff. And the ramp that you contributed to has been incredible for ADU access for our families and parents that require that. I'll just, you know, go down the line here, but you can also move along if you'd like to. One of the really fond memories that comes to mind is our tree planting ceremony, which so happened to have fallen on our pajama day. Picture down below, obviously trying to schmooze you, but it was so random that with the planting of Arbor Day and Alison Hopkins and just the BB tree board coming together and us planting our beautiful tree on the corner of the highway. And it just so happens that we were talking about the soil and a worm farm that we introduced. So it was just very, everything this past year has been very serendipitous. And I, I believe that there's a purpose behind that. The facility itself, I, like I stated at the, at the bottom of my statement, I encourage you to come and visit and just see the transformation that has occurred from it being a small community-based church to the Chamber of Commerce and now a preschool for 20 children at a time aged two and a half to six. And then summer camp, older kiddos. Norm Nyberg is an angel. He's been, he's been a gift as far as helping to maintain the property. I call him up and I ask him questions about child size six. And he's like, all right, I'm on it. I'm going to come over and check it out and loves the children and seeing them. So thank you for that gift that you've also provided. A few of the projects that we are looking at are replacing gutters in the east side of the building. I imagine they're about 20 feet. And like I stated, Norm, I believe, has gotten a quote for that. We would love for town to purchase and cover the work on that. And SMMS is open to negotiations. But the, the wood itself is falling down and I've been very cautious of getting quotes. getting quotes myself because I want to, I don't know how old the wood is and I don't know very much about guttering. So, or gutters themselves. Um, we've had a lot of assistance also from parents uh, reaching out to local businesses as far as uh, Two Brothers Concrete, for example, we have a walkway now, a curved walkway that serves obviously for safe uh, movement between the back or the east side of the building and the front entryway, uh, but then also serves for scooters and bikes for the kids to wear helmets and go down and be speed racers. Um, we've installed a little sandbox on the northwest corner due to family volunteers. We've had Sam Gunita from ACA. We also have two little planters um, on the north side of the building. We're trying to maintain. Um, we have a little worm farm. So as far as just us making ourselves at home, we have, um, but very gracefully and intentionally and carefully and um, the floors have held up beautifully. Murphy's Oil is a gift as well, just like Mr. Norm, but um, Norm is not a floor cleaner. And um, it's, we just feel like our work with these children, I um, again, a serendipitous moment with police chief, airport manager and fire chief speaking after them. Their public service, their public service is essential. And me, not just me, our staff, any early childhood educator, any teacher in this community is a public servant. Public, private, alternative. We care about this community. We care about the future. We love children and we see them grow and we see what they, what they're interested in and what what we can provide them for their growth and not not ours. Although selfishly, I love being around our little friends. Um, so yes, as per usual, I'm scattering all over the place, but I am excited to um, we are excited to of St. Rosa from the chapel lease for the forthcoming year. And perhaps beyond, depending on, um, I I do want to give a few few uh, a few operational updates, if that's okay. I don't know how long I've been talking.
More than three minutes.
Okay. Um, we are also a UPK provider, which is excellent. So this coming year, we'll be providing um, UPK state tuition assistance for ten four-year-olds. We are a mixed age program, so we will have five, two and a half to three-year-olds, we'll have ten, um, if not a few, no. We'll have at least six, two and a half to three-year-olds, ten um, four-year-olds, and the rest will be hopefully in the kindergarten age. Um, and that can fluctuate. We've had a few families um, either move or decided to pursue uh, alternative education. And um, that process in itself has been challenging. But we have been working closely with the chief early childhood council, big shout out to Sarah Roenbeck for guiding us in that process, especially as a new organization and my multiple roles. Um, so we're excited to secure that funding for our families that most of the most returning families um, are very excited because we are a non-for-profit private school tuition base. So they are thrilled for that. And for the past six months, my administrative support, Ms. Erin Melrose over there. She and I have been working um, to offer infant toddler workshops in the community and we received twenty-five thousand dollars, the Circle Grant, to provide um, not just a full set of infant toddler materials, but your house in my garage furniture as well as teacher training. So Erin Melrose is is um, getting our teacher training sponsored. And my alma mater, the Montessori Education Center for the Rockies, we brainstormed and they have now actually started their own uh, traveling Montessori consul cons consul consultancy, consultancy. Uh, and through that, they were able to provide six workshops, one, the first one at the Stardust. And then the rest were actually at the community center. So we utilized the Panion Room and the Aspen Room for childcare, but then also mainly workshops uh, fulfilling the uh, development Montessori at home um, space design and we invited all members of the community to join us, not just from our school, but other programs as well. Um, and reflecting upon that and Erin and my hard work, it was beautiful to see several new families, meeting families that they'd never met before. So the conversation started there. We sat in a circle, you know, it's kind of like kumbaya, but the consultants themselves um, brought up topics or uh, proposed suggestions for these parents to not only bring into their homes, but spark the conversation. So what does that mean surrounding their home spaces, but then also behind that, how can we provide a community based program to begin, but then also later on advocate for infant toddler pro like licensed infant and toddler programming um, in the future. So that was very exciting and we just received word today that we have a few extra thousand dollars that we can apply for um, to continue to fill out my garage with future infant toddler materials and um, and cover some staff time that um, Erin and I have been putting in as far as extra workloads. So um, we're really excited as far as the young organization goes and um, please come and visit us. You have to see these children in action um, and to see what these beautiful beings are capable of in our invisible direction. Um, so yeah. I honestly also wanted to bring you autographs because one of our Facebook page posts was honoring you guys every week. We're trying to honor organizations and members of the community that have helped us. But I didn't want to go that far. Thank you. And I'm open to questions and comments.
Questions for Lisa?
Yeah.
I think it's great, the um, you know, training of people on infant and toddler, you know, parenting, that's great. But if you can live that along and to qualify more people to have daycare in their homes, that would be really terrific.
Definitely. And over this past, yeah, over this past weekend, we held two informational sessions about continuing the work that we were able to provide through the Circle Grant. So in August, Erin and I will be hosting um, bimonth, we we're calling them parent-child gatherings, um, where Erin will be guiding the conversation and bringing in, setting up a mock very small infant toddler community based on the topic and have more of the parents observe their children in that environment, but then also obviously be open for conversation and connection and playdates and just open the conversation of how everyone can help each other um, while this uh, issue is getting remedied day by day. Lisa. Thanks.
Mayor.
Yes.
To uh, clarity around uh, the the lease actually gives uh, the school the option to extend another year. So we've already done that. If we made the request, that's that's happened. So I think Lisa was just kind enough to come, share the updates and
Yeah, it's great to hear.
It's been a great partnership and I think it was worth time just to kind of reflect on that.
Hey, Mr. Phil Peters. Full circle because I think the last time that I spoke, you were you were perhaps still the town administrator.
Perhaps.
But you gave gave us the get-go and your trust, you guys are changing uh, children's lives and residents' lives and I hope you continue to do so with just supporting um, early childhood causes and organizations, not just our own. But there's a lot of movement happening and exciting time to be part of this town. It's also anxiety ridden for parents of young families, as you've heard and as you know. Um, my fear is that if preventative preventative measures or, you know, if the the continuance of trying to solve the issue at hand is not um, addressed, perhaps even at every Board of Trustee meeting or at least once a month. It's going to compound and compound and compound and that's very um, I think detrimental to our small community. So um, I'm really passionate about this work. So was the board. So is our staff. Our staff is incredible. Um, not very much turnover. I'm actually stepping down to a half-time school director role so I can focus on onsite school directorship. And we're currently searching for a part-time executive director for me to work closely with. So we have more time for grant writing. So we have more time for outreach. And just expand our little tentacles of who can who we can reach and um, how we can help with what we have to offer in hopes that it would be reciprocated. So.
Great.
Thank you for your time.
See you're coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so now we are on the Covenant Street Base One Amendment to Property Conveyance Agreement. Um, Philip, is this you or is it Joseph?
Yeah, I'll step in for Phillips. We'll knock the chocolate. No, uh, thank you, Mayor, trustees. Uh, on page one, starting on page one of three, the action that we're asking you to consider is adopting ordinance number fifteen. Um, which would be a amendment number two to the property conveyance agreement. So I'll walk through uh, the three changes that that amendment is proposing, as well as the basic context. I'm obviously happy to answer any questions and as always, Jeff is on the line to be able to provide some legal um, nuance to my general statements. Um, so as you all know, the property conveyance agreement uh, is the document, just like a real estate contract, where we are under contract with fading west to transfer property uh, to them for the purposes of building uh, the Carbon Street Base One Apartments, right, sixty apartment units. Um, so there are three amendments. Backing up, sorry, just a little bit, in March, you all amended this contract um, by extending the timeline for due diligence uh, from March thirty-first to July thirty-first. Um, so we are not asking for an amendment to that particular date. We're remain very optimistic and hardworking to achieve um, meeting that deadline for various approvals that are needed. This, these particular changes are um, more bringing the contract in line with where the project has evolved. Um, the first one is recognizing that the entity that owns the property is going to be an entity uh, named Carbon Street Apartments LLC. Um, I mentioned this in the memo and Jeff can speak to it more. Uh, this has been verbally acknowledged in conversation with fading west ever since they responded to our RFP that their ownership of any development is always through subentities. Uh, both for liability purposes, but also to allow and facilitate investors to take partial ownership of those projects through investments. Um, so this entity that's now been set up, Carbon Street Apartments LLC, um, is the the entity that would own the land and that would be beholden to um, any covenants that we place upon the land and need restrictions and so forth. Um, the second change that is contemplated in the this amendment is recognizing that we are no longer building a childcare space as a part of a vertically mixed-use building. The previous or the current property conveyance agreement requires that before we close on transferring the land for the apartments, we also execute and go under contract to receive back a condominium space for the childcare. Well, as you all know, the childcare is now a separate building on town-owned land. So those provisions that speak about another property conveyance agreement and condominiumization and all those things are no longer needed. Um, so that's the reason for the second proposed change. The third proposed change is really updating the legal description, again, kind of going back to separating the childcare space into a separate building. Um, the property conveyance agreement, as it states now, is for all seven of these lots. Um, as we finalize the minor subdivision process, consolidating these into two separate lots, we will only be conveying the one lot number eighteen for the apartments themselves. And so we we propose updating the legal description in exhibit A to the property conveyance agreement to be the proper legal description for that one lot. Town to retain ownership of the land um, that will be known as Lot Nineteen, the childcare facility. Um, so I'll stop there. There's a, on page one oh four, there's a brief little diagram that's um, show what I'm speaking of with a lot eighteen and nineteen. Um, and then, as I mentioned, ordinance number fifteen is the action that we're requesting to consider tonight. The happy answer.
Questions for Joel?
Joseph.
Oh, Joseph, sorry. Sorry, Joel. Whoever does, I should be sorry. But are there any questions? Is the uh, is there a tax advantage to having the Chaffey Housing Authority be one of the owners of the LLC?
Yes.
And will it be?
They are in negotiations right now, CJA and fading west and entering into a special limited partnership. Um, which would give the housing authority point zero one percent ownership, limited partner ownership of this Carbon Street Apartments LLC entity. Um, should that all go forward, the project would gain um, what they call sales and use and property tax abatement. It would no longer be charged those taxes as long as they comply with certain um, affordability and other requirements under state statute. Um, I'll defer to Jeff on the state statute pieces, but that's in negotiation right now between fading west and and housing authority.
So would have some starting point and from then on, they might escape the taxes. Is that right, Robert?
The intention very much is that that would be finalized in the next thirty to sixty days before construction starts. Um, they obviously, if that happens, the sales tax on the construction materials would be exempted. And so they, the the project stands to save that potentially five, two to five to eight percent on those construction materials. So the the intention and the direction between CJA and fading west is very much to get that done soon.
Good. Any other questions for according to them? Joel, Joseph? We're ready to, is there a motion on the on the resolution?
I would like to make a motion to pass ordinance number fifteen.
I'll second.
Thank you. That's Swisher and Row. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Just keep it moving along. Um, okay, good. Now we are at the place of trustee staff interaction. Someone would like to start? Okay. Watch on. Sure, okay.
So tomorrow, meeting with Sacred Christo to talk about fire renovation projects that might be impacting the town of Villavista. So um, really, um, you know, looking for information um, data, um, see if I can get a schedule, see if we can get a kind of a scoping and understanding and see how, you know, we could help them, you know, with uh, potentially a pretty challenging project that might be impacting some, you know, some trees in our community. Um, I've had a lot of, you know, good feedback and conversations with the tree advisory board and some other citizens throughout town. So I think I have a pretty good, pretty good idea of um, you know, some of the diverse perspectives on this and um, but yeah, really what I'm going to meet with them is more of an information gathering, you know, try to understand what the project is and yeah, see, see what's going on with it. Over there, so. So yeah, thanks.
Good. Yeah, I hope we can just get some information and and communication going on that.
Yeah.
Uh, Jack?
Um, I really have nothing other than did I come in too late then? Resolutions?
You did good.
Cause later?
Nope, it's done.
They done?
Yeah.
You're good.
I already did that.
Get out there and start.
Okay, that was my bad then. I have nothing.
Okay, hold on. I have nothing. All right. You're good.
Uh, no, I just really appreciate the uh, work session earlier and one thing we didn't really get into, because I mean, there's quite a bit to get into, but go ahead to memo is the water supply strategy idea and kind of that ongoing kind of living document. Love to dig into that a little more, but uh, I'd rather say really enjoy that and having everybody in person just for some reason helped. And having everybody in person just for some reason helped a lot of think anymore.
Great. Do you know?
Nothing, just same. Thank you so much for putting that together and having them here in person. I think we made a big difference. And having the ability to ask the questions and just get the quick responses is super helpful, so thank you for that.
Bye bye.
Good.
Okay. Cindy?
Water will continue to be an issue forever and ever. Um I have kind of a question for the lady that that talked about childcare. Um we are pursuing Carbon Street and trying to provide a childcare facility building short of the town running a daycare center. How do you think we can help?
Well, I'm trying to like, I know Lisa is making efforts to try to provide the zero to three gap that we are missing and it's, you know, I I just feel like I am out of a loop as to what the timing was, like after having participated in all of the initial planning on the Carbonate Street info of trying to figure out when this might actually be coming along and how you know, town could help facilitate someone who's expressed interest in this space and providing a need, how we can make that all come together that we could move forward as a community and try to start solving some of our issues.
Yeah, I realize that people aren't taking on infants, but we can't require someone that applies for a daycare application. We can't tell them how or what to run their business, even though it is very important to fill that gap. So I just wondered if you had any special ideas. Thank you.
Andrew?
Just echo the 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 thank you for the water session you guys put on. Well done. Thank you.
Joseph?
Um two things. First, thank you, Megan, for bringing in my BV. I'll call out my bad on that, that it's been absolutely slipped off my radar to provide updates there, so that will pick back up.
Is somewhere else someone should look for updates on? Issues like this?
Public numbers in the newspaper. Yeah, pretty, pretty unuser friendly. I mean, no offense, Hannah. Yeah, so that that my BV should be the resource. My apologies that it wasn't.
Ken also just encouraged, reach out to Town Hall anytime, right? I mean, that's also always an option too.
Um one other quick topic to bring up and maybe a little bit of a direction seeking for to bring back for next meeting, but there's two grant opportunities that um have arisen um or come officially open. One of them is officially open, one will be coming open late in the fall. Both are specifically for public infrastructure to support affordable housing. Um the first that's open now is called More Housing Now. It's put on, it's a program of DOLA under their Energy Impact, um Energy whatever it is.
Assistance.
Thank you.
Yeah, assistance fund.
Yep. And we have, I mean, we have three potential projects, two very um, you know, projects on the affordable affordable housing side that we've been working on that I think would be very eligible. The first is Carbon Street Phase Two. Right? So the the one that's coming, Phase One is already in the works and has grant funding. We already have the public infrastructure paid for for that piece, so we're not necessarily eligible for Phase One. But Phase Two is coming and will need infrastructure. That's eligible. Um the other would be the crossing. As you all know, um that developer is making relatively significant commitments to affordability and yet the deep, the steeper commitments to affordability do rely on subsidies for the infrastructure. So the the question, I guess, before you or the topic I want to bring up first, the deadline for this grant is August first. It's a grant format that we're pretty familiar with this town. It's the same that we use for police station, con plant, for the water plant project. And so the the question is, um would you all support putting in an application to support either simply the crossing at this moment in time and or Carbon Street Phase Two? Um obviously, a resolution authorizing an application needs to come from you all similar to the resolution that you all provided to the crossing for the transformational housing grant um which they went two rounds of review and then were not awarded. Um so this particular grant would award potentially up to two million dollars. The crossing would be providing the match requirement for this. Town would not need to come up with the matched dollars. So I wanted to raise that. There's another grant with a larger potential grant amount coming in the fall called Strong Communities. Um so it may not be a either or now, it might be a let's try it now and and let's try it then. Um but wanted to get your direction before we put the work into prepping for that.
I have a quick question for you. Um the Phase Two Carbonite, I thought those were going to be not, I don't know if they're I know we've been focused so much on Phase One, but aren't those going to be more market rate or higher cost to help offset Phase One?
The the intent there is that the difference would be that they're ownership, not rental. Um so we still haven't established the exact AMI ranges for that phase. I would anticipate them being between eighty and one hundred and forty percent AMI, but the the whole structure would be town home or attached single family homes that are sold. Um and so we haven't really tagged into the the details of it.
They would be market rate.
Okay.
No, they would not be market rate.
Okay.
And and the affordability criteria for these grants is one hundred and seventy percent AMI or less.
Okay.
So that particular project would.
No, that's helpful. So since I know the crossings, that's a bummer that it didn't work out with the, but I know he was planning to do apartment buildings, I believe. I feel like.
Both apartments and townhomes.
Yes, and so I don't know, I'd be excited for maybe him to get a little piece of the pie because I think apartment buildings, that most likely lower AMI rate where it's harder, I think, for us to get that in the, there's a lot of one hundred plus AMI, I think, possible, so in terms of direction, I would, at least for the board, I'd say go for the cross. If you can, if you can only pick one, I'd say that that project personally.
Let's hear your comments about that.
So if we go from the crossings, if the private development is that correct? How do we know they would be giving us?
Because they need us to rezone for them to make it happen too.
How do we know if we put town effort into saving them money? How do we know that it gets passed on to the people that are going to use it and need it?
Yeah.
That's my concern.
Yeah, we would, we would.
Does that sound tacky?
No. It's a proper question.
Okay.
We would be requiring deed restrictions or other affordability covenants recorded on certain lots and properties.
Okay.
Um so obviously, should we apply? Should we receive the award? Should the crossing gain rezoning and preliminary and final plot approvals? Um at the point at which we're discussing the actual public improvements and those costs, that's the point at which we would be saying, these are the requirements that we're we're placing on you if you want this subsidy. And we would need those legal mechanisms in place before those subsidies would be deployed. There'd be numbers.
Yeah, Sue.
Um so Joseph, uh one of my questions was going to be where we stand with Prop one twenty-three, the state's affordable housing program. Is is what you're talking about part of that?
No, it's not.
Okay.
To answer your your question, um I'm working to understand the baseline reporting and commitment process that the town of Vina Vista would have to submit to the state in order to start to be eligible for Prop one twenty-three funding. Um that deadline is November first. I'm attending a a full day workshop on that specifically on the twenty eighth, I believe. So the the meat of of the work is setting a baseline of how many affordable units we have and demonstrating how we came up with that number so that in the future, as we report on growth, we're using the same methodology. Won't go into too much detail, but there's that's a pretty significant question, how do we calculate that upfront? So that's what we're working on.
Okay.
It'll come back for you. You all would have to authorize committing, making that commitment and reporting that to the state because it does sign town out for future reporting requirements. But this is totally, totally distinct program.
Okay, thank you. And but also just to add, I would support moving forward on the projects or or the I the possibilities you're talking about, grants.
Thank you. Just have a question on Phase Two. Um is eminent domain section playing to wrinkle in any of this and like, is that going to hinder it? And so should we just focus on Crossman because that we probably won't get that anyways? That's my only thought on is if that they wouldn't release that because we don't totally know how that's going to go yet.
It's an excellent question and it wouldn't hinder our application. It might hinder our competitiveness for that particular project. Um and that might be a reason to focus on the crossing now. When Strong Communities Grant comes out in the fall, I very much hope that that eminent domain case is closed or finished. I don't know if you can close one of those, but um we would, we would have title to the land. In that case, we'd be much better suited to be able to demonstrate control of that land and you know, move forward with with trying to promote that project. Um so yeah, it's part of the things to consider for sure.
Yeah, maybe to me, it kind of makes sense to go just all effort on Crossman at its first stage if possible and then kind of switch over once we have the domain, so we don't spread thin and also that we're just bugging them on one thing. But you guys have a better idea of what works or doesn't work.
I I think it's a very competitive request, especially the number of units that may be a result from these dollars. It's competitive fast.
Good, yeah, I'd like to see us support his efforts.
I'll I'll work with with other staff and developer to formulate a plan. You'll probably see a resolution authorizing the application in our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you.
So ahead.
Philip?
Oh, did you want me to touch on this? Sorry, I forgot.
Yeah.
I just, when you mentioned the energy.
Yeah, please do.
Um so Energy Smart Colorado, they're a nonprofit, uh put in touch with them after I met, actually Devon. Uh Christine Berg at the Energy uh office put because they're looking for local partners or it's uh up here and what they do is kind of was doing uh for about a month and a half in another company, but they'll come in and do an assessment of somebody's house and see if there's a way they can either weatherize it, which I think is probably the biggest benefit for a lot of folks, but they're focusing on the eighty to one twenty AMI category. So then come in and say like, you know, you can seal the attic, put in veteran insulation to weatherize it. And then if you want to go even further, you can put in heat pumps instead of baseboard heating or whatever it is, whatever combination. They're competing for a grant right now or for a prize. They want to show community support uh to be more competitive to get that grant. They already have it from the county and from Salida. Um they're asking if we would send on to this letter supporting them and bid for this grant. And so again, they're already partnering with Sangre. Uh if they get this grant, um they'd have more funds to help kind of uh people on community in the eighty to one twenty AMI with that process.
So you're looking for a
Just see if we'd be able to sign it.
So is there a motion to um have me sign this letter?
I so moved.
Thank you. So we have Cobb McCretzy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great.
Cool.
We'll do that. Thank you. The motion passes.
Sorry to cut you off, Philip.
No, I was gonna mention that. That's so, that's it. Thank you.
And Joel, congratulations on becoming the planning director.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's for real. You all get our haircuts together to celebrate.
Come up multiple times.
Fresh dudes.
Well, um let's see.
Sue.
Would you like to comment?
Uh, nothing else. Cindy asked my my other question, although I would also like to thank uh you all for the water water uh session. That was really great, really helpful.
Yeah, thank you. Great, thanks. Um I I also met with the restorative justice people this week and hopefully we'll keep, you know, using their programs. They have some really good programs in the schools um as well as trying to divert um particularly youthful offenders from um from our justice system and I corresponded with Lisa Skanga to make sure she and and the judge are on board with with the idea of doing this, and they are. So uh uh we're hoping that the offenders will take responsibility for what they've done and and change their ways and make restitution and go forward as even better people. Um I also went to the um kickoff for the McGuinness Gym. Um uh rehabilitation, it's going to be a great big project, but they've gotten a lot of grant money and um eventually uh they will turn it back over to the school system uh for use as a middle school gym. So it's going to be a great, great project. Um I love July and um Vina Vista. The parade is always so much fun. You're always either in the parade or watching the parade. It's just really cool. And then the car show is a very special event and just really uh wonderful to see, see all the all the vehicles that people have put so much work into restoring it. It's really fun to see families walking along and you can just tell that they're all telling car stories, like what were you doing when this car was built? So it was really cool. So that's it for me. Um so next thing on our agenda is uh an executive session. And um I'll go ahead and make the kickoff and then we will um have a vote and go forth into the executive session. Uh so this will be an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and or instruct negotiators pursuant to Colorado RiGis Statute Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E concerning the Covenant Street proj- project. And I would like to have a motion from somebody to go into that executive session and then we'll have a second and then a vote. We have to have a two thirds vote. Sue?
Sue.
Okay, so McCretzy, Row. And uh let's do roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCretzy?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Okay.
Mr. Row?
Yes.
And Mr. Swisher? Yes.
Very great. The motion passes. And uh we will have the Board of Trustees, Payne and Joseph, Philip.
Joel.
Joel.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll get to go home and Jeff.
Can we think about a ten minute recess before we say that?
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, so we can get things cleaned up.